So I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education for Monday, April 24th, 2023. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, just as a rule.
Before we get into the agenda in the meeting, I have a brief statement to make. I wanted to make a statement to this board and the public. After the completion of this meeting, I will be absent from board meetings and participation in board activities for a few weeks as I deal with a personal situation that requires my and my family's attention. With the help of my wife and family, we will manage this situation with humility and respect. I will make no further comment on this matter, which I hope that you understand. I ask for your consideration while this situation is managed and resolved. I remain committed to the work of this board and the district. In my absence, I have confidence that each of the eight other talented and experienced board members will be able to work with our excellent administration to push forward on all the important work that we do as a district. I thank all of you for your continued service and for everyone's understanding as we move forward. Thank you. Next on the agenda is to review and approve the April 24th, 2023 agenda. Can I get a motion? Julie, second. Phil, all in favor? It's unanimous. All right. Next on the agenda is approval of the April 3rd, 2023 minutes. Can I get a motion? Julie, second. Brendan, all in favor? It's unanimous. Next is comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum 15 minutes to each subject. I would ask that you state your name and the street that you reside on. Anyone have a public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and recognition. And first up, we have Technology with Mr. Salvastrini.
Good evening. We welcome back Mr. Salvastrini, who was, I believe, here at the last Board of Ed presentation, giving us an update on digital wellness. So thank you, Matt, for coming back and giving us an update on learning management systems. Tonight, you will find a couple of devices in front of you. We are going to try something a little bit new, just so that you all have an opportunity to dive into some of our learning management systems and experience what our students experience. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mr. Salvastrini, our Director of Digital Learning.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Kranti. Feels like deja vu here for me. This is my third time. I think I get the record for the number of presentations in one academic school year, so I'm gonna make a, use our 3D printer, make a badge for myself on that a little bit later on. But good evening, and thank you for the opportunity, provide you with some insights on our learning management systems that we use across the district. Before I start, I wanted to thank the contributions of my ICT team, some of whom are here. We have Ms. Emily Hermburg, who is our high school technology integrator, integrator, and Michelle Ludlala, who is our high school library department chair. They represent the high school portion, but I've also had the contributions of members of my team from the elementary and middle schools as well. So I thank them in advance for their contributions to this effort. So as Dr. Kranti said, my goal tonight is to make this an experiential learning event, where I can share with you the types of platforms that we're using K through 12, and also put you in the seat of a learner here in the district to get a sense of how we're using these tools to support teaching and learning. Okay? So we're gonna start by giving you a little bit of background of what the learning management, learning management system is, how it's being used at the different levels, and then we're gonna get our hands on the, a couple of the different platforms that we're using. As always, we start with the Board of Education goal. And the, the one indicator or descriptor, the detailed target that's related to learning management systems is related to the goal focused on making sure that students are all prepared and graduate with the technology skills to be successful in a dynamic and complex global society. So just keep that in the back of your mind. I'm gonna weave that into the conversation as we move throughout the presentation this evening. So what is a learning management system? I'll start with a definition for all of you. It's a software application that creates a digital environment for teachers and for students. It's a place where teachers can organize information, communication, and assessments related to learning. I like to call it a digital ecosystem, a learning ecosystem, where an ecosystem is a complex network of interrelated systems and resources. The, we integrate tools, platforms, and they work together to support teaching and learning. Within our learning management system, teachers can create and share materials, create assignments, provide feedback to whole class groups or individuals, and create assignments, create and assign assignments to students, and incorporate other technology tools as well. For students, they can share materials, they complete assignments, they can ask for help and communicate with teachers and other, other students in the class as well. They can provide comments and feedback on the activities that are assigned to them, and they can see and manage their own learning within an org, with an organized approach. Now, I wanna pause for a moment here and emphasize this point, that not all learning occurs within these learning management systems. It is a tool that is a part of our instructional repertoire. Okay? It would be disingenuous to say that all learning is organized and delivered here, but it's one part of our set of tools that we use to support student learning. To take it a step further, a learning management system allows us to, teachers to differentiate and personalize learning. It provides teachers multiple and varied ways to provide, to gather feedback on students. Teachers can organize learning in one location that can be accessed, not just within the boundaries of the instructional day, but outside of it as well. It allows teachers to create and manage content and deliver it in a timely manner to students. It also provides efficient management of a wide range of learning resources for students as well. So here you'll see the three different learning management systems and learning management tools that we use across the district. In K2, we use a platform called Seesaw. In grades three through eight, we use Google Classroom, and at the high school, we use a platform called Schoology. You may remember my presentation earlier this year when I did a brief review on the type of technology tools and platforms we use, and I said, "We were very thoughtful about the choice of the, of the technology platforms we use with students to make sure that the tool matches the developmental level of the student." The same goes for the learning management systems that you see here. Okay? K2 Seesaw, you'll see very shortly, provides students that are emergent learners, emergent readers and writers, the tools to be able to share their thinking without having the ability, the proficiency of being a writer or reader to get in the way. So let me dig a little bit deeper into Seesaw first. You'll see very shortly that Seesaw offers our youngest learners a very clean and simple interface that's easily navigated by students and their teachers. As I mentioned before, our, our youngest learners, they're emerging readers and writers. It allows them to use tools to create, to collaborate, to share their thinking, without the concern about, "Am I a proficient reader or am I a proficient writer?" It provides teachers with private and simple ways to provide feedback with, to students. Students can really start to build their proficiency in using technology tools as well. They use recording tools, they use camera tools, they use draw and erase tools and editing tools, and they're building their proficiency as young as kindergarten. It also allows teachers to organize work so it's easily accessed by students, and they can monitor progress easily and quickly. In K1, what we've seen is that the Seesaw is used mainly for, as a communication tool, providing students to share their thinking with their teachers. Now, in a moment, I'm gonna play each of these video clips for you, but I'm gonna set them up really quickly. The one in the upper left with the star, students are asked to share out what is one website or app that they can go to, which is approved for their, for use on their iPad. The next one, you'll see in the bottom left, students have been engaged in kindergarten in a design thinking project, where they're, they work as a team to create a, build a raft that will keep those little yellow, blue, green, and red characters afloat for a minute. And the, the clip in the bottom right, students are asked to evaluate a set of, a code to see whether that loop that's listed in the bottom will allow that monkey to connect, collect the bananas that are there. Let me see if I can play these for you here. Oh, I don't have the audio. Well, the audio's not connected to the...
Oh my God, don't sink. Don't, don't. Yes, mine won't.
That's right. That's all the audio you need. And it, it has that, that child, that capturing that child's excitement of the fact that his team was able to actually build the raft that float, floated for a full minute. This one's a little harder to hear, but I'm gonna play it anyway, where it's that coding one.
You need that jump up button to get the bananas.
So she's saying that the, the monkey needs to use the jump up button to get the bananas. So all of, these three examples are really showing how they're using it to communicate their thinking to their teacher. And as they move into grade two, what we've seen is that they're moving from using it as a communication tool to a creation tool. The two examples that you see here on the left, students were asked to create a digital citizenship poster to provide, to share with a younger student how they could be a good digital citizen. And that poster on the left was created all within Seesaw and shared out with the teacher. On the right is a snapshot of a research project that a second grader engaged in, where they did some research, and they had to start to share out some information on the animal that they researched, all within Seesaw. So this is what teachers are saying about Seesaw as a platform for learning. And you'll, I, I tried to catch a snapshot of a kindergarten, a first, and a second grade teacher, so you can see how they, the value at different levels. In the kindergarten teacher, she said that she really values the ability for students that have to record themselves. And she talks about having, where a student can create a piece of writing, record him or herself, and then submit it, where she can then collect all of them and use her prep time to review them and provide feedback in a timely manner, which would be more difficult for her to do if she were just to arrange small group and listen and take notes. In first grade, the teacher loves Seesaw and its ability to be used for formative assessments, that she can differentiate. A little later on, I've actually, I'm actually going to play the role of your teacher, and I've assigned different tasks to you based on what I've seen in some areas where you need to do some practice with some of your reading. In second grade, the teacher, this is, think back to the slide before, where there was that research project on coyotes, where the teacher loved the ability for the student to engage in the research, and then use the, the camera tool to take a picture from the book that they were doing the research on, and use that within the presentation that they created for second grade. Now, a little less verbose, but nonetheless equally powerful is what students say about Seesaw. The first one, simply put, "It helps you learn and is really easy to use." Enough said. "I like drawing pictures and showing my thinking." The next one below, "I like to use the microphone the best of all, because you can record yourself and it's cool to listen to yourself." At least someone likes to listen to themselves after they've recorded it. I don't. And then the last one talks about, "I like using the tools to help me show what I know. I like Seesaw because the teachers share things to help you learn." So students as young as first, second, kindergarten first and second grade see the value of that tool. In a minute, we're gonna actually have you open up an iPad, but before I do that, I want to familiarize yourself for what you're gonna see when you get into it. Okay? So you'll see a couple of different buttons and areas here. The first one, I'll see if I can use this. This is a journal, okay? And the journal area is where, I think of it as a news feed. It's where if a teacher wants to provide you with an update or communicate something to you, that's where you would find that post from the teacher. It's also an area where, think of a blank journal, where a young child could create a drawing and submit it to their teacher, record something, make a request to their teacher, and do it all within a journal. The number two button is next to the activities button there, and that's where a teacher will create learning experiences and activities and arrange them and push them out to the whole class or groups of students in the class. The number three is up near an add button, where a child can actually click on that and submit something to the teacher through their journal. And number four, this snapshot is blank, but typically, this is where the student would see information regarding the activities that have been assigned to them for, for that course period. I've mentioned the journal before. This, if they click on that, this is what the students will see. These different options, they can take a photo, they can draw, they can create a video, they can upload something from, that may be locally saved on their iPad, they can write a note which they can submit to their teacher. We don't allow them to pull in links because they don't have access that way, but that's a feature that's, that's also there. Okay? Now, before you open up your iPads, I'm going to fire up this one here. I'm gonna do a little bit of a show and tell, so you can see what it is that you're going to, you're going to experience in a minute. Okay, so you're gonna locate the icon on your iPad that's a Seesaw. You'll notice it's this one here. It's the one that looks like a little multi-color Seesaw. All right? I've already clicked on it. Okay? Just a quick, show me if you're, give me a thumbs up if you're there. You're good? Got it? I'm sorry, the teacher and me. So...
Sorry. Mine says no internet connection.
Okay. It, it, let's just check and see if it's on Wi-Fi. Give me a second. Brian, we just need to make sure it's on the NCPS Wi-Fi. Okay? I'll bring my one over to you in a second if they won't get you set up. So what you see here are several different activities. Okay? The top one, "Let's Explore Seesaw", is one that we use with all of our students starting in kindergarten. It's literally, it, it's an opportunity for them to get familiar with the different tools that they can use within Seesaw. What you'll do to take part in that, you have the instructions there, you're simply gonna click on Add a Response. That instructions will then be transferred there, and then you can use your tools that you'll see located on the left-hand side and the bottom, to complete the different activities. Use the pencil tool to write your name, use your eraser, et cetera, et cetera. When you're done with that, you just click on the Check button to submit it. I'm gonna continue with the instructions a little bit, and then I'll let you play. The next activity of... This, this could go wrong for me, but, boys and girls, I'm going to ask you to put your iPads down and look up at me for one second. I told Brian that this could be a career-ending thing for me here, but I'm gonna run with it. So what I wanted to, I just wanted to run through the activities with you. The, you see Fluency Friday is the next activity you have. Okay? What you should also find in front of you is a passage that I printed out for you. This is a task, this is an activity which is used by our second grade teachers, where they provide students the opportunity to read a book that they've chosen, take a picture of the text, and then record what they're reading so the teacher can get a reading sample for them. Right? For the interest of time, I've created a snake in the library, skunk in the library one that you should find, I think underneath their laptop there. That's what you'll use for that activity. Okay? The last one you hear, I, this iPad has been assigned the Magic E Phonics lesson. Okay? Some of you may have that, some of you may have a different activity. The reason that you don't see the Magic E is because I've assessed your progress as a reader, and I think you need something different. Okay? So what we're gonna do now is I'm gonna let you try these three. Okay? You can do them, you can sample them, whatever you choose, but I've asked the cabinet to help me by circulating and making sure that you're fully engaged in learning activity, or you need any assistance. And then when I get a head nod from Dr. Lutzey, I'll know it's time to move on. Okay? So feel free to ask any questions as we do this, but this is sort of what our kindergarten to second graders do when they use this tool. Okay? I'm just gonna say a few things as you keep working. Keep in mind that our, our youngest learners are gradually introduced to all of these tools. You're getting a crash course in this right now. They become very proficient in using all of these, but we do it little by little over time. As you continue to work on, throw out a couple of other things. You may have noticed in the first one, "Let's Explore Seesaw," that I actually recorded my voice for instruction. So the teacher can actually talk about differentiating. A teacher can record the instructions for a student, they can take a video and submit that as a part of the instructions as well for students. So if you think about how can, it can remove barriers for students to access learning, these tools, they do exactly that. Okay? I'm getting, reading the room. I think we're ready to move on. Okay? It really is a wonderful tool. I can't say enough about how teachers and students really value it as a learning resource. So I'm gonna move on now and talk a little bit about the tool that we use in grades three through eight, which is Google Classroom. Okay? And one of the key reasons we use Google Classroom in, at these grades is because it integrates so well with the other technology tools that we're teaching students to use. So in third grade, our technology integrators and classroom teachers begin to introduce productivity tools to students. Google Docs, Google Slides, what a drive is, how to manage resources within a drive, Google Sheets, Sites is a little bit later on, but nonetheless, so that we're starting to teach them, "How do you use these tools, and why would you choose to use one tool over another?" That all starts in third grade and proceeds fourth through the middle school. In fifth grade, students are provided access within a walled garden to Gmail. Okay? Google Classroom allows for the integration of all of these different G Suite resources within Google Classroom. Okay? So we were already using these tools. It made sense to use this learning tool, this management tool, because it just, it just fit with the instruction and the education that's going on at those, at that level. One of the other things that's very efficient, that it integrates with Power School, so we can actually create all of the classes for teachers once we finish our enrollment in August. Those courses are automatically populated, and it actually updates each night. So if a student comes into the district or leaves the district, those, that roster is updated very dynamically each day. You saw how clean and simple the format was. Seesaw is, Google Classroom is similarly clean. All right? And if you think about the developmental level of these students, you want clarity, you want simplicity, you want clean organization. The other neat thing is that you can integrate a lot of the applications that we're already using. We video, et cetera, within Google Classroom. Okay? WeVideo, et cetera, within Google Classroom, okay? This is a snapshot of an eighth grader's Google Classroom. Their course page. Again, all of these classes have been created for that student. They come in the first day of school and they see these here. You'll also see perhaps that there's also workshop experiences in here. There's a Google Classroom for orchestra and also digital citizenship as well. The purpose of the, of this is, and the automation with Power School is so that it, it allows teachers to focus on the content that they're putting in here and managing the learning experience for students without having to worry about managing, adding students or taking students out of a course, okay? It allows student, teachers to be focused on the actual instruction that's in here rather than managing the platform itself. This is a snapshot of what a student would see if they clicked on one of those tiles, okay? In the upper-left-hand corner, you'll see the upper-left arrow, you'll see three buttons. You see "Stream," you see "Classwork," and you see "People," okay? The "Stream" is similar to that "Journal" button that I mentioned in Seesaw. This is where you would see like your daily feed, okay? It's the first thing that a student will typically see when they click on the course. And then they can also click over to "Classwork." And then the tab, this is where a teacher can post activities and assignments. And they, they can turn them in automatically within that space. Once the assignments are submitted, they can grade them. Students can actually pull them back and they can edit them if they request to edit them if they need to. And teachers have the opportunity to review them. They're all organized within the drive for the teacher. The neat thing about that is it also is that a teacher can create a Google Doc and it creates an individualized copy for each child within the class. So there's no need for the teacher to create 20 copies of a, of a resource for the students. It's one, it's duplicated for each student and then they can personalize it with their own work, okay? So within "Classwork" as well, students can go back to previous activities, review the content that, that the teacher has posted, okay? The resources that the teacher offers. So it provides, if you look on the right, this is a list of the classwork that the teacher has provided the students throughout the, throughout the year. So the student can go back and see what has been posted, the assignments that the teacher had given. You know, I think we all have children have those binders full of papers that may or may not have the last assignment they need to review for the upcoming test. Teachers can be very strategic about what they put in here so that students can go back and there is a trail of learning for students that they, that helps them manage their learning life. Within the "People" tab, it's, it lists all the students in the class and a contact for them as well as a contact to the teacher in case that student needs some additional help, wants to send them a message about work that they have, whatever it may be. Within the "Classwork" tab, there are several different buttons. What's assigned, what's missing, and then what's done, okay? So if you think about helping a child, again, think of what their responsibilities are as a learner. We may, they may miss an assignment. But here it helps them see, okay, I need to go here, am I still caught up to date, did I miss anything? Now, I know you'll all be disappointed, but we're not going to, I'm not going to have you do a, an active learning experience with Google Classroom. I'm going to spend a little bit of time giving you a chance to get into Schoology in a minute. It's not quite as flashy as the other two. It's also a little bit more ubiquitous, so you may be more familiar with that than you would be Schoology or Seesaw. So I'm going to talk a little bit about Schoology now. We actually started the conversation about a learning management system in 2017. And it really started with a conversation with teachers. Teachers became very cognizant and students were sharing about the different types of expectations. A different, that's probably not the right way to say it. The different ways that teachers organize learning within their courses. And they became very cognizant of that. And they started to ask the question, how can we help students manage and organize their own learning experience and create some consistency regardless of the course or the year or the teacher? And that really prompted the conversation back in 2017 and say, what are we doing? And we talked about how, what are the expectations teachers already have? And then what are some tools out there that might help them with this? It also, students really have the ability to know exactly where to go, to get what they need in the information regarding assignments, tasks, homework, et cetera. And also if you start to think about what's being expected of students and how learning is managed at the college level and even after a college, you know, colleges very often use tools like Canvas or Blackboard, which are also sophisticated learning management systems. But if you think a little bit about the private sector, you know, the teams use Slack or they use a variety of different tools to manage effective work in teams, okay? So just as a quick comparison between what Google Classroom offers and what Schoology offers, Schoology builds off of all of those different features that Google Classroom has, but also allows for, there's a graded level sophistication. The ability to differentiate by group and individual. The opportunity to create not just courses, but also clubs that students can be a part of. So it's a non-graded activity, but it can be organized within Schoology. All of the due dates for activities, assessments, et cetera, if a teacher puts it within Schoology, the student can see all of them for all of their courses within one calendar. And there's also a very sophisticated and reliable discussion thread that can be incorporated into each and every class. Here's what teachers say about the value of Schoology. So the first one is about the value of assessment tools. They're powerful, they're very engaging, and they allow for differentiation and they add a certain amount of interactivity into the learning experience. You will be a student in a course where you're going to be asked to take an assessment. I, I hope you'll appreciate the variety of tools that can be used in creating an assessment when you'd actually, when you actually try it out a little bit later on. Teacher, another teacher said, "It's a holding place for all things related to the course, especially helpful and coordinated differentiation with instructional assistants and caseworkers." Right? So no teacher teaches a class in isolation. There are related staff members that need to be a part of that process. And that, and Schoology creates that structure where a co-teacher, a collaborator can actually be made a co-teacher in the class, see what's expected of students, and in some cases differentiate and personalize that as a, in collaboration with the classroom teacher. We have over 20 different separate software tools which are integrated within Schoology. Google Docs, NearPod, Cami, research databases, et cetera, are all clickable within Schoology and they can be incorporated at the choice of the teacher into the course, okay? And this is what students say. Now, the quotes from the students here are seniors at NCHS right now. And these are just four samples of over 140 student seniors that were surveyed. What's important for you to keep in mind is that these students have both pre-Schoology experience at the high school and post or current experience, members, participants in Schoology. So they've seen life before Schoology and they now are familiar with what learning is like with Schoology. And the, you know, students talk about the discussion boards and how helpful they are. Color-coded folders are also very helpful. It doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're thinking about managing learning across a variety of courses, the color of a folder and the ability to, to personalize that makes a difference. It helps them stay organized. Another student talked about the ability to separate, have separate folders, teachers that post assignments, and also that the student can know their homework and classwork right away when they, when they open up that, their Schoology link, it makes a big difference. Again, having all your expectations, responsibilities within one calendar, the students said, is really very helpful and it allows them to track their time and manage their time. That's exactly the type of thing we want to teach our students to be able to do. And then lastly, "A consistent place where all my class resources are located." And the calendar feature, once again, is the thing that students echo is really valuable features within Schoology. So this would be the page that a student would see if they click on Schoology. It may be out of order in your presentation. I decided to make a quick swap because this is what most students see when they open up Schoology. They can set it so it looks like this. I'll get to that in a minute, which was, however, this is, this is what most students see when they open it up. If you look, this says "Recent Activity." Again, this is like a message board for them. What's been going on, what are your teachers posting for you? This is all of your teachers. If you look at this one sample, you'll see three posts from one teacher. And then you'll see another post, if you look at the picture next to the name, all right, from another teacher. So this is the news feed, this is an update feed for a student, all right? In the upper-right-hand corner, all they need to do is click on that calendar icon and they will be able to see a view of all of their assigned expectations. I'll get to show you a picture of that in a minute. On the right-hand side is a list of to-dos, which includes what's coming up, what's overdue, and upcoming events. You can also click on and see things like, what's the, what's the calendar rotation at NCHS? And also what is, have I recently completed? So this is the other way you could look at, so now you can also, students can click on Courses and see all of their courses in a tile view. What I wanted to highlight here is that we've created course, we've created these tiles for connections at the high school. You can, they're used for clubs, for example, like the National Honor Society. And we've also used it create, to create a credential course for the library. So if a student wants to get credentialed on using the podcasting studio, they can actually go in there, take a self-paced credentialing course and be able to go down and actually use the podcasting studio at their choice. So this is the screenshot of a typical course. Well, I want to take a minute and have you look at the top of the page. So there's an announcement at the very top of the page from the teacher. Just under that, you'll see it looks like a little square of rulers where the teacher has linked the online textbook. And we've, we've set an expectation for teachers that they include their syllabus outline at the top, pinned to the top of all of their courses, okay? So again, creates a certain amount of instructional consistency. A student can go in there and see exactly what it is that is, that's been outlined in the syllabus for the course. And then below that, this teacher has created different folders for different units of study and for also different resources that they feel are important for their students within the course. On the left-hand side, you'll see the beginning of a list of a variety of integrated software tools, everything from EdPuzzle to ABC Clio, Britannica School, several databases, very powerful and useful databases. We have integrations for music production software, video editing software, all which can be clicked into a course when a teacher decides on a specific activity or assignment that they want to use it in. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see, you'll see that the upcoming assignments that's listed for the student there for this specific course. Just a quick visual. These are some of the logos for over 20 application integrations that are, have been completed for Schoology. As I said, everything from research databases to PDF editing tools, video graphic design tools, music creation tools, et cetera. This saves us the need to have a student to go out and find that link to be able to use that one piece of software and then create or utilize it. It's all within that one ecosystem that I talked, mentioned. This is a snapshot of what a student would, could see within their Schoology calendar. So when a teacher attaches a due date to an assignment, an activity, or an assessment, it shows up in their calendar. It's color-coded, students can color-code it so they can see the different expectations or due dates for different activities and allows them to differentiate between the different courses. It also helps students see their short and long-term expectations and manage their assignments. So within Schoology, teachers have, can access a special feature within a course called workload planning. This is a snapshot of a teacher-facing page where a teacher can set and establish, you know, a specific number of assignments that they want to search for, for their students. And allows the teacher to visualize the work that their students have across a variety of, all of their classes. So this teacher has, is looking to see their students here. They can see on April 20th, their students have a large number of assignments that are due. If we think about the health and wellness of our learners, this is a really important tool for teachers to use as they plan out what they, what they want to assign to students and when they expect them to be handing it in. I think this is a fantastic and powerful feature. Okay, so let's see if we do this. Now, again, before you go to your laptops, I'm going to show you what the, what you will see once you click on. Now you're going to move from the iPads in a moment to your Chromebooks here, okay? Allow me to just quickly orient you. This is the, what you would see if you're a student. As I mentioned, this is their recent activity page. Now, Ms. Herneberg, you'll see Ms. Herneberg's face here because Ms. Herneberg is the one that helped me put a lot of these assignments in there. But you will notice that these are for different courses. This one is photography here, this one is English. But so disregard the fact that Emily's face is there. It would be, these would be different assignments for different teachers. But this is the recent activity page. You'll see that once you log in, okay? Over here, you'll see the to-dos and upcoming events. I'd encourage you to go and look, for example, at the calendar for the student. Now we populated it out for, you know, a few days so you could get a sense of what it might look like. But I'm going to, this is how I, I do it. I would go back and look at, I can look at your courses if you want to go back and look at them. And you, with it, we've created an activity within each of these courses. You can do all of them, try to do all of them, you can do one of them, you can look at them, it doesn't matter. But I just want to orient you. You just, if you simply click on it, then you'll notice that there's here, this is a syllabus for this course, okay? And then here is an activity, a NearPod activity for you to do if you choose, on ShutterSpeed, okay? I'm just going to orient you to look, so if you look at the English course, the English course has two assignments that you can engage in, a discussion on, on turning 10 and then a literature-based thesis essay if you so choose. Skeleton, not the whole thing, don't worry. It's not as intimidating as it sounds. Within math, we created two assignments. We've got an understanding check, all right? And this is where I talked about the different tools that a teacher can use when creating a formative or summative assessment within Schoology. So I would encourage you, if you have a minute, to try this out and you can simply read through the instructions here and actually take it, make an attempt at this, this assessment. And then there's a, there's an assignment, "What do you love about being on the Board of Education?" And some instructions here where you can actually record your voice, audio or video if you so choose and submit it, okay? Now, you should, if you open up your Chromebooks, I know that the profile that will show up says "West School." Just disregard that. West School students don't have access to Schoology, but it's just, it was the simplest way for us to set it up right now. You'll see the Schoology icon. If you click on that, you should be able to get started and self-navigate through any of those courses or all of them as you choose, okay? Oh, you could accuse me, no? So as I wrap up, I added this slide. It's not in your printout because as I was sort of reviewing and preparing for this presentation, I just went back to the board goal of all students will graduate with the technological knowledge and skills to succeed in a dynamic and complex global society. Sorry, tripping over my own tongue here. And I started to think about the different types of productivity software tools that are used in sales, in finance, in higher education. And I started to think about Slack or Teams, Salesforce, Airtable, Canvas. The list goes on and on. In fact, there's probably not an area of industry where they're not using some type of management tool to get the most out of the time that they have, where they're putting... They're connecting people across the globe with the resources they need and managing... Help them manage their time so they can get the most out of... Be as productive as possible. What I saw is a connection that we... Starting with Seesaw and moving all the way through Schoology is that these learning management systems that we are using here help set students up for success after high school. And so I see that direct connection between building the facility and a familiarity with how to navigate through these learning management systems, not just to be a productive learner, but because this is what will be expected of them when they leave us and move into the workforce. So... But I wanted to wrap up always thinking forward. What are the next steps that I see in this area with learning management systems? First, you saw lots of quotes from students and staff for the... Within this presentation, I want to continue to gather feedback from stakeholders to see where we can improve. The wonderful thing about these platforms is they're always coming out with new features. They're always making adjustments, and also always looking for feedback from schools like New Canaan to see how they can improve. Also, continue to engage in professional learning with these platforms to see, look, what's next? What's on the horizon? I think there's a great opportunity in learning from each other through collaboration across grade levels, across buildings, what works well within Seesaw, creating opportunities for cross-grade conversations about how they get the most out of these platforms. And then lastly, consider ways where we can communicate the value and function of a learning management system to families in New Canaan Public Schools. So with that, I hope you've enjoyed your hands-on experience. I'm happy to take any questions you may have. I may ask Emily or Michelle to come on up if there's a Schoology-specific question because they're really the experts in supporting teachers when they look to collaborate in using this as an instructional tool.
I would just say thank you. I think it's amazing how... I remember when we were talking about piloting all of these tools, and then we moved, accelerated that during COVID. But what strikes me is just how empowering it is for kids of all ages, just to have everything in one place and just the sense of control that I think it probably gives all kids and different styles of learners is remarkable. And, you know, I look forward to kind of seeing what's next in terms of Schoology and all the tools. Do you feel the same way about Google Classroom? I mean, do you feel that they're keeping up in terms of development and technology?
I think it's being leveraged really well by our teachers at Saks and at the elementary level. I think that's where the feedback from teachers is, what is it doing for you? And what do you want that it may not be doing for you that I think is where I'll be listening? But I've heard complaints, if that's any questions.
Do you get feedback from students from college who come back and say, "I felt prepared in this area and not that area," or "in addition to these tools that you gave us, I should have had XYZ tool"?
That's not data which I've gotten yet. Okay? I do think it's... I'd be interested in being able to have conversations with students that come back and see, was it helpful?
We should give you the students after we meet with them in December.
I would love that. Love that.
So thank you for this. In terms of some of the limitations you were talking about and the complaints, do we know what else is out there in terms of the learning management system, kind of that ecosystem? Like, are there, you know, new interesting apps and technologies out there on the horizon that might be open for us?
So I think we made a really careful choice about Schoology as a learning management system, and I feel very confident that it's the best that's out there for what we're looking for it to do. I think the folks that, to my right here, are the ones that are really constantly looking about how to leverage different aspects of the tool. Those 20-plus applications, the fact that they're there and available for teachers are really largely due to the fact that folks over here, and a couple of the folks who are not here, that work with them, say, "Look, we should really make sure that it's there for you." And there are sometimes hours where they're on a phone where they're creating an integration with databases that otherwise wouldn't give high schools a second look. Some databases that never before this... We're probably leaders in the area of integrating some of the resources, those databases, into a learning management system at the high school level. Hope that answers your question.
Other questions?
I just want to add that when we decided on Schoology, we actually did a pretty extensive research process. So we had about three to five different companies that came in, that we met with, that we called communities to find out what they were using, why they were using that platform, really spent a lot of time investigating before we went to Schoology. And one of the features that I think we really liked about Schoology was also their ability to be very hands-on, give us service, and answer our questions right away. So that's really important as sometimes it might go down, and we get quick messages out to students and to staff as to why it's going down and will it be back up? And all that goes back to that communication piece, too.
Yeah, I think it was a year and a half pilot experience with them.
Thank you. I really appreciate it, actually, the hands-on. My kids are already ahead of me on some of this stuff, so this was actually good to see and touch. I just had a quick question on like digital security and informational security and protecting student data, whether it's aggregated or disaggregated. And, you know, how do we... As these systems all evolve, and we have a couple of different systems in the system, how are we tracking that? And how do we kind of... How do we manage that risk?
So we don't sign a contract with any software company that uses personally identifiable information without them signing an agreement, a data privacy agreement, for New Canaan Public Schools. So all of those platforms, and the Google one was negotiated by the state. So I know that's a concern because it's big data there, but that has been negotiated for us by the state. And all of those 20-plus applications, we all have data privacy agreements for all of those.
Okay, great. That's excellent. Thank you. Any other questions?
I would just like to quickly say a thank you to Matt, to certainly Michelle and Emily, to your entire department. I mean, you mentioned the work we had been doing in investigating and looking at different LMS solutions for the high school. And we probably had about a three-year horizon in front of us just prior to March of 2020, where three years turned into three days. And you and your team and the entire department really did amazing work in getting everything up and running. And it would have been easy to sort of pull back afterwards and just go back to the way things were, but instead you've continued to move forward. And when we talk about the acceleration through the pandemic and sort of where we are today, it's really a model for how the momentum that we were forced to create has continued to move us forward and move our work forward with kids. So really, great work, great job. Thank you for presenting. The reason you've presented more than anybody is because you're so good at it. But really, most importantly, you and your department have really kept that momentum going and kept us moving forward in some of the ways that you've mentioned tonight. And there's too many to mention. We'd be here all night if you did. But thank you for that, and really impressive and great stuff.
All right. Next up, we have the solar cogen update.
They're going to do a quick flip of laptops, I think. And while they do that, I will introduce Dan Clark, our Director of Facilities, Facilities Manager, and Scott Olson, our Assistant. We've asked them to come to give the board a brief update on our work around certainly environmentally conscious slash cost-saving initiatives, whether it's solar, cogen, and other things. And two, to talk briefly about some of the big initiatives that our Facilities Department has been shepherding throughout the course of the year. As you know, now that our budget process is concluded, we have the funding in place for next... For this upcoming summer and the work that we'll be doing. But we wanted to just take an opportunity to give a brief update on sort of where we are with this very, very important work. When people ask about our budget and our expenditures and the per pupil expenditure and how we could be, you know, so much lower than the rest of our Derg, in large part, I believe that the work we've been doing around environmentally conscious and cost-saving initiatives, such as what we're going to talk about tonight, is a big part of it. You know, we've been in the vanguard of this for some time now, and it is yielding dividends for us. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dan and to Scott.
Well, thank you. We're very happy to be here to share where we are with our projects. You've heard us address you three or four years, and as quick as that has gone on and all the changes that have been made to the campuses, I want to thank you for all your support with that, taking advantage of whatever incentives are out there from either a power company or the gas company, so that we can really be as smart as we can, too, as we go through the process with all the finances. So first one, we're going to have the slide that you have. We're demonstrating the outside lighting. On the left, of course, is south of the school where the gym is. There's two little fixtures there. On the right is an example of our parking lot lighting. And then in the middle are the lights in the gym at the high school. So we have that there because these are the type of projects that we look at where there's fixtures that are not really standard throughout the building, even including in this room. What can we do inside? And then we'd hire a contractor who can do all the cookie cutter-type fixture lights down the corridors and classrooms and things like that. That really is their expertise, and it's easy for us to get them in and out, whether it's during a vacation or during where the classroom's empty, that sort of thing, versus the exterior where with traffic and cars and everything, it's really difficult to try to maintain a consistency with how many fixtures you're working on. So what we thought was the best way to work was have our guys, as I think you've heard us say it before, we have three licensed electricians, three electrical contractor electricians that are available. So we took that on ourselves. We bought the fixtures, for example, on our own, went through and got the incentive money from the power company and did the work. And we thought that, you know, this is a strategy. It's one thing to put the lights in, but it's how we can do it economical as well in a lot of ways. So they represent fixtures that we've taken on and have replaced it. This slideshow today is over the last year and a half of work. A lot of people didn't recognize this at first because in addition to the lighting, we also painted all the walls and new flooring. This is the Saks School as another example. Before I get to the solar, and it's not only just the lights in the classrooms, lights in the hallway, but Scott's team also installed control systems. So if you have three rows of lighting in the classroom, and the third is up against windows and it's very bright, the teacher has the opportunity to go there and shut off that one row, for example. Or there are built-in dimmers. Every classroom has its own dimmer switch where they can, again, depending on what they're doing at the time, or once they leave, it'll slowly shut down to zero. So there's a lot of economics built into this, too, and gives the teachers a lot of options to, you know, how they can operate that. So we were very fortunate to go through... It was probably about almost a year by the time we got the Saks and the high school done. But we also had a very nice incentive from the power company of over $400,000 back to us to cover a lot of the costs here. So the next one is outside, getting back out there. As you know, we have five schools all slated for solar. Four of the schools have them operating, and the fifth one is underway with the mild winter that we had. We took advantage of that of getting the contractor up here and trying to do as much work as we can, especially during the school vacations, so that when the winter... When the summer comes and we have the brightest amount of sun, we're really capitalizing on the ability rather than install it in the summer and then wait one year for it. So with the weather the way it was, it worked out really well for us. So this is the first system that we put in in 2019. And this is just one example of a sheet that we get that lets us know how the systems are performing. So this is a 12-month look at it. And this is at the South School, and over the past 12 months, we've saved $47,000 just in this one school for this work. And you can just look at the chart with the blue and the red, and that is the delta. That's how much we've saved and how much we've reduced our consumption with that. There's the West School. You can see the light, the solar panels up on top of the building. East, that was the second system that went in. So the savings isn't as great as it was for the South School, but it's still significant. At Saks School, at this point, we changed the roof above the cafeteria, and we're able to then put a solar panel system on that. As time goes on and we address the Saks roof, then we'll be able to plan out our solar panel for South School... I'm sorry, for the East School. And the High School, again, another situation where we took advantage of the weather this year, where there's two systems together. The school is so big that we put two different systems. One is up. It's not running yet. We're waiting for final clearance and approvals. And the second one should be available to us next month. So all five schools will have working, operating solar arrays. solar arrays. So we just want to give you that. I'm going to give it to Scott, who loves boilers. He can talk to you for a long, long time. And we have real good news on that, too. So.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So I just want to take a few minutes to update you on all the boiler projects that we have finished, that we're in the process of finishing, and then some upcoming ones this summer. But I guess first, let me just explain why we're replacing the boilers. So, the boilers that we have at the elementaries right now, they're, excuse me, were installed about 95, 97 during the renovations. These boilers, the cast iron boilers that we have, they're typically 25 to 30-year life expectancy. So we're, we're pretty much at the end of life. And we also know this because the last few years, we've had a few repairs on them that just tell us even more that this is the time to go ahead and replace them. And along with having the gas and then over at West, the propane, it gives us the opportunity to get something more efficient, which is the condensing boilers. So if, I guess we could start with the middle school. This project is actually already done, which you're seeing on the slide right now. We took out three older cast iron boilers, which efficiency ratings, you're looking at about 80 to 85%. Now, we replaced them with the new condensing boilers, which these right here, you're looking, I believe they're about 96 to 97%. So, really big upgrade. We had our first winter with them, oh, full winter, I should say, just this last winter, and it was just flawless. I mean, everything was perfect with them. So it was just nice to see. We didn't have to worry. I mean, it was, it was really, really excellent. So that's complete, all set. Now we have East School. We have the funding for this year. So we went along and purchased the boilers through our contractors. And we actually took advantage of the April break to actually demo out one of the boilers, keep the other one online since we're still in heating season. And then they were actually able to bring the other three boilers onsite into the boiler room and begin piping two of them. So we're almost, I don't want to say halfway there, but we're close to halfway there with East School. They might even be complete depending on when the season ends and we could shut the last boiler down. They could even be complete before the kids get out of school. So, and then for next year's upcoming budget, we have West and South. And we're actually approved for this already, so we're able to order the boilers. Now, these are usually about an eight-week lead time. So we're probably looking to start these probably around the time the kids get out. So we'll have the whole summer to, to hit the ground running. Now, all these projects, the, all three elementary schools, I mean, we're really looking to have this all completed by the end of the summer, probably September, when all the kids come back. So we'll be up and running, ready for heating season for next winter. So, but again, these are a lot more efficient, less maintenance, less carbon footprint. We're running off of gas now. So all in all, I think it's going to be a really great project. Any questions on the boilers or?
I'm just curious what the, what the lifespan is on the, on the, these ones, the high-efficiency ones?
The high efficiencies, they're more about a 20-year rather than a 25-year warranty. I mean, life expectancy, I'm sorry.
How is the cogen working at Saks with the new boilers?
Do you want me to take that one?
Yeah, because I wanted to talk about it after, but if you'd like to.
Oh, go ahead. I'll, I'll fill in the blanks.
So the answer is Brian's going to tell us. So, the CHP, combined heat and power, so it gets fed with natural gas, which of course came into our district, so gave us another opportunity. And it heats not only the domestic water, but also hot water. And then it also produces electricity. So it's a great system, everybody. But they're finicky, they're very temperamental. And, and we have it all completed. The job's been completed. The, it's all passed. We've been with the engineers. One thing we don't have is the communication. There's a communication that has to be in place 24 hours a day because the manufacturer watches it the whole time. But right now, we're having that. Once we get that sorted out, if that's, that's pretty much where we're at with that. So.
Okay.
Sure. Just exactly right. We met on Friday to talk it through a little bit. I think it was Friday, Thursday. The, it's just as simple, it's an issue with a point-to-point connection between the CHP unit and the manufacturer. They will be monitoring it 24/7, which is a good thing to do when you're running essentially a small turbine and generating your own electricity. But due to cybersecurity protocols through the firewall, we're just working through those details. So, we put a couple, another potential solution on the table when we met. And so we'll pursue that and, and see if we can make that happen. So, it's ready to go. We actually had it running, I think, for a short period of time. And then they came down and said, wait a minute, we need to see this on our system. So, we're teed up and ready to go. One, one more step.
And just as a side, this is the actual picture of the boilers. This is them, so that you don't think we cut the picture out of the series catalog and stuck it onto a slide, you know? Because that's really the way we want it, people to understand. You know, we really value what we're able to do and we want to take care of it. So that's, you know, we like to say, you could eat off the floor. You know, that's how clean, because it's got to be safe for everybody. So, so really, and you know, a lot of what we've talked about started five years ago or even 10 years ago with five and 10-year plans. What are we going to do? What, what are the needs? And so, you know, this is, what we described is really kind of fun where, how can we do this? How can we get through? Well, if it snows, if it rains, you know? So, a lot of that is planning way back when, when we're trying to figure out what the weather forecast is. So that, as they say, we mentioned a few times, taking care, taking advantage of the nice weather that we've had this year. And even two years ago, when we had a two-year schedule to be able to replace the high school roof, but we did it all in one year so that we could avoid all that aggravation of having trucks in the parking lot and the mess it makes and all that. And again, to take advantage of things like, all right, now we can move in earlier with the CHP. So what's next is we, and I know you've heard us before present about our five or 10-year-long plan with capital budgeting. And, you know, that's really, we're at a spot where we need to replenish that. What's next? What, what are we going to do? And the state's kind of helping us because in the meantime, while we're planning, and we have equipment that knows that's on the plan that we, we really still have to continue to budget for. But the state of Connecticut is requiring all public schools to go through and do an existing condition report on all your HVAC systems, top to bottom. Ventilation especially is what they want to touch, but they want to look at everything because a lot of times, if you don't have a good ventilation system or you don't have the infrastructure, it doesn't matter if you change the fans, if your transformers aren't large enough or the, the duct work isn't large enough. So, we had already planned that, to do that ourselves. And that is to bring an engineer in and we'll walk them through, him or her walk through the whole building, all five buildings, and let them see what our concerns are based on operating the buildings all these years. What they've seen in the industry, especially, and they're going to see boiler rooms that are, that are new and they're going to see, you know, a lot of good stuff, but what else? And, you know, a lot of the ventilation systems, we're going to walk through. So we're going to get that done. We think that that's, we're at a point now where we, we should feel this is a good time to do it. So, especially if the state is mandating, anyway, we are already planning to do it. So, we are still, you know, faithful, faithful but hopeful about the CHP getting online because we think there's a lot of opportunity there. And possibly, one of the places to put one is the high school. And, you know, take advantage of that. And it's such a large school, see what we can do there to save. And looking at the high school, they have air conditioning systems and, and ventilation systems that are still fine today. They're, they're really great. But we want to plan on that, too. Where are they going to reside in the five or 10-year plan? So, we have to evaluate it anyway with the state. So we're kind of putting it all in at the same time. And then I, I think continuing what we talked about with the staff that we have. We have an excellent HVAC mechanic. We have three, as they said, licensed contractors. We have somebody that can do sprinklers and plumbing, in addition to full, full-blown plumber. But they're also mechanics. So, you know, when you, you come to work with us, you might be out shoveling snow, you might, you know, do whatever you need to do. But, you know, the more and more we can do and do in-house especially, and it's not just all the, the big projects. It's any repairs that, you know, we can do quickly. And so, so that's what our next phase is. We want to give you, we wanted to give you a heads up as to where we are right now and where we're going in the rest of the year. And so, I miss anything?
I think you got it.
Any questions?
Did anyone have any questions?
I just wanted to thank you for all this, like, looking forward, saving us the money. I don't know if you have the statistics right there, but if the percentage of the electricity that's being generated by solar at the various schools, I've always thought was pretty impressive. Isn't it East, wasn't that, I mean, do you have it right off the tab? Was it like 80% or something?
I think that was, that was South.
South. I mean, it's, it's a significant amount that were green.
Yes, yep. So, you know, once we do the, once through, there may be other, maybe space available for additional, but this is something, you know, this is where we are right now while we continue to take care of all the boilers.
And each school has a dashboard that shows the energy being generated and the number of trees that we've saved. And where's Erica? And the
CO emissions.
The money, the CO emissions, all of those pieces, which I think are, it's great for the kids to see it when they're walking in the, in the building and to be able to talk about it and, and what have you. So, yeah, we can see about dollar savings overall as well. I think that's an important stat, for sure.
Yeah. And even going back to the lighting, you know, we have, we're trying to count them, but we're over 7,500 lights.
Yeah, at least.
Between the high school and Saks. And, you know, it also avoided the cost of all the existing bulbs that needed to be replaced because these were new fixtures and bulbs that were removed. A lot of times, people just go in there and just change the, the sticks and take the bulbs out. And they have these LED sticks. And, you know, that's good if you can't afford it. But, you know, fortunately, we were able to get all the fixtures as well. So, that's going to help us not have to, because it's, it's a nuisance to change white bulbs, you know, as you can imagine. But better yet, what else can we use the guys for? What can we do? So, you heard a little piece of that tonight. So, so thank you again for all the support that allowed us to get here.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Next on the agenda is the statement accounts.
And I might add on the end of that, with some of the solar projects, we have power purchase agreements whereby we are purchasing power from these companies, these green companies, paying three and a half, four and a half, five and a half cents per kilowatt hour as opposed to paying 17, 18, 19 cents. The, the savings is, is incredible. Statement of accounts, start with the operating fund as of March 31st. We've spent $66.1 million or 66.7% of our budget of 99.1. We have an additional $28.2 million of budget encumbered, leaving 4.8 million or 4.8% of budget available encumbered, which is fairly consistent with where we were at this point last year. In the package on page two, there's a year-to-year attainment analysis, which I use to determine if we're still on track. And what it showed as reported is that compared to the prior year, our current year attainment is higher, which is not good, by 1.48%. However, as we've had to do in the last several months, there are a couple of anomalies in either this year or last year's numbers that we normalize for to get a better apples-and-apples comparison. Last month, we had two anomalies. One was related to a late billing from the bus company. We usually get billings from them in October and, and February. The February billing didn't arrive on time. We got it in March and that's, so that's ones off the table. But we do have one more anomaly in benefits in that we had three transfers that occurred last year but were not reflected in our year-end numbers, which is part of our denominator here, until, until June. So if you normalize for that, the, the fact that, as reported, we're 1.48 points higher than last year, when you normalize, we're, the difference is like 0.3%. It's almost negligible. So what, it's an indicator that we're still remaining on track to achieve budget for the year. There's a chart in there as well for grants. Our full year award for grants, all grants in full year '23 is a little over $3 million. As of March, our total expended is $1,077,077, leaving a remaining balance of 1.9 million. And these federal grants, most of which are a two-year grant, so there's still money that's anticipated to be expended for the remainder of this year as well as next year. And then finally, there's a chart on school lunch. Revenue through March is $2,048,983, reflects a year-to-year growth in revenue of 12.5% compared to last year. Our attainment analysis for revenue would indicate that we will likely exceed our budget by a couple hundred thousand dollars. However, our expenses are also higher due to inflationary pressures as well as the higher revenue driving some additional cost. So we, as, as I said, we expect our revenue to exceed budget by a couple hundred thousand. Our costs is, our costs will also be over by approximately the same thing. So from a bottom-line perspective, we're still on track to achieving our net income for the year. One last point I'll make is, in our budget for full year '24, we assumed a 5% pricing increase. We will be bringing to the board a proposal in May that will reflect a price increase proposal for full year '24. We haven't had a price increase in many years. Michelle Santelig, since she's been here, there has not yet been a price increase. So I think it's due, especially with the inflationary pressures that we're seeing. Questions?
Any questions?
Nope. Thank you.
So we will move on to comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. I'd ask you to state your name and the street that you reside on. Are there's anyone would like to make a public comment?
Hello. I'm Butterworth for 52 Main Street. I wanted to respond to Mr. Bennett's comment earlier on about how he planned to deal with the controversy that's been in the press. And I wanted to comment that if Mr. Bennett were my neighbor, I would embrace that strategy and support it with love and concern and passion and take all the time you want to, to handle your personal affairs. But Mr. Bennett is the Chairman of the Board of Education. And every day that the Board of Education stays silent on his role in light of this controversy represents a body blow to the New Canaan Public Schools. Now, I could be wrong. Maybe Mr. Bennett's going to come up with some magical solution and take this out of the press and say it was all a mirage and never happened at all, no consequences on the schools. But in case that doesn't happen, I think we need to ask some difficult questions that are not personal, but have to do with the status of Mr. Benefit, Mr. Bennett as Chairman of the Board of Education. That one day last week, I'm sure Dan would take back if he could. But on that day, as the Chairman of the Board of Education, the questions arise, did he make choices that made 4,000 students under his leadership more safe or less safe? Did he demonstrate belief in the rules of responsible conduct that are being taught in the schools? Or has he invited cynicism about those rules? At a time when many hundreds of faculty and staff are burning the candle at both ends to solve profound educational challenges, has he made those solutions easier or more difficult to achieve? difficult to achieve? I trust that Dan will resign from the Board of Education and from his chairmanship for the good of our children and for the reputation of our schools and our town. When he does, I suggest we rally around him with compassion and support. Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, Rita Bettino, and I'm on Fieldcrest. I'm speaking tonight as a concerned mom of three, including my youngest child. He's an NCHS student who will hopefully be getting his driver's permit this year. I was genuinely sorry, Dan, to hear about the events that happened on Thursday night, truly. And I'm not here to throw stones. Having said that, I fully expected there to be some degree of humility, accountability, and accountability tonight, and I was disappointed. I was kind of dumbfounded at the seemingly cavalier response, especially given the seriousness of the situation. Saying you'll step away for a few weeks and then run this meeting tonight as if nothing had happened is unacceptable and falls far short of, falls far short of what parents and Canaanites in general should expect from this board. We have literally just kicked off Safe Driving Week at the high school. What does this lack of accountability say to those kids? As an elected school official, you set an example to these children. As elected town officials, we are expected to not only walk the talk, but frankly, to be held to a higher standard. What message are we sending if the very people in charge do not take accountability and experience some consequence for their actions? As a leader in this town and for the parents and children you represent, I urge you to do the responsible thing and to resign.
Yep.
Hello. Alicia Meyer of Luke's Wood Road. I wanted to read aloud from the Board of Ed's bylaws. These are found on your website. I'll get to the important part. The Board of Ed is committed to the highest legal and ethical standards essential in governing its school system. This is 9,005. It was adopted in 2016. On the way in here today, I walked by a crashed car that's parked in front of the school as part of Safe Driving Week. In my job as head of ABC House, I send five scholars here to school every day. I go with them to RAM council meetings. I take this job seriously, and I'm concerned. As a member of the Commission for Health and Human Services here in town, we spend a lot of time working on addiction and DUI issues, and we even spend time and money at the holiday season running PSAs in our local media about driving under the influence. I also was surprised and sad to see the news. I also, like I said before, I expected a resignation immediately. So to come here and see someone sitting in the chair seat, truly as if nothing happened, and saying they're taking a few weeks off is frankly insulting. What are we doing here, guys? What are we doing if we can't set the basic example that there is accountability to our kids, especially during Safe Driving Week? I would say it's irony, but it's, it's really just so frustrating. I wish you the best, but I also request that you resign. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, we'll move on to announcements and future business.
Sure. Just a couple of quick things. We met with Tri-State this morning to finalize the report, which we anticipate having the next couple of days, and we'll be sharing with the board likely at our next meeting together. We also just recently received the secondary enrollment projection report, and so similarly, we'll be reviewing that with the company and hope to bring that forward to the board at our next meeting as well. The planning and the work around the move to 220 keeps moving apace, so we're continuing to work with the group over there and, and work our way through that timeline. And our junior prom was Friday night and went quite well by all accounts.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Julie, second, Brendan, all in favor? All right, thank you.